Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City of San Carlos City Council Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency Special Meeting. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
You'll notice that we're somewhat reduced in size tonight. Matt Rokott is home with what we all believe to be the flu. And Mr. Grisilli is chairing another meeting, and he will be here, but he'll be here a little bit late. Okay. The first item is public comment. Persons wishing to address the City Council on matters not on the posted agenda may do so at this time. You're limited to two minutes, but I only have one card, so I might be a little bit liberal on that. And if you're speaking on an item not listed on the agenda, please be advised that City Council may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed under the Brown Act. Council's general policy is to refer items to staff for attention or have the matter placed on a future City Council agenda for a more comprehensive action or report in a formal public discussion and input at that time. So with that, our speaker is Liz Sekler.
I sure hope I'm not the one who gave Matt the flu on Saturday. I have asked Crystal to share with all of you and us some beautiful pictures that were taken over the last week at North Crestview Park, so that you can enjoy the photos while I just give you a quick update on what's going on up in that neighborhood. So, the group to help preserve North Crestview Park has continued to work within the neighborhood. We've done some outreach with Park and Rec Commission and with individual members of the City Council to continue to pursue what the future of that park will be. Shape San Carlos -- excuse me, Shape the Future surveys were including the possibility for using that as an off-leash dog park area, and if you haven't seen the results, tonight you will, of that. But the dog constituency was not really wild about that as an opportunity for location because of access and distance and several other reasons. So there was very little interest in using that as a dog park, which of course is just fine with those of us from the area. But we would like to see it preserved as a park. In terms of other opportunities for its use, tot lots, the newly renovated beautiful Crestview Park is less than a mile away. There aren't a ton of children up in that neighborhood of ours, and our local homeowners' association has a tot lot anyway. As far as a pool, there is a significant expense to develop the site if a pool was going to try and go there. So there's a lot of different options, people I know, that are interested in what could we use a park space for. The clear preference for the neighborhood is to preserve it as open space, as you can see from these pictures. Maybe do some very minor path improvement. This is natural from the deer and then also the people following the deer paths. And maybe some non-native thistle removal from when the land was sort of encroached upon during the development of the association. Also, for those of you who aren't aware, this was the site of the West Coast War Dog Training Facility in World War II. So we would like to investigate the process to list that facility on the California State Historic Register. There's an application process, wouldn't take a whole lot to do, and that does require 90-day notice of any local agency, by the way. So, this isn't the 90-day notice, I'll just tell you that right up front. So, in closing, the ideal would be to minimize city spending on North Crestview Park development, but use docents in the way of wildflower walks, pointing out wood rat nests, which are very easily accessible, the war dog history, the fault line, which you can see from the area, the watershed, Mount Diablo, and investigate outside sources of funding where there's grants for youth involvement, preserving local history. There are some things like that. And limit the need for a sequel review by doing a major project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Liz. All right. Would anyone else wish to address the Council on any item not on tonight's agenda? All right. We are now in a study session. This meeting is really a continuation of Saturday's. It's -- we are going to -- if you were here on Saturday, you'll see the same presentation you saw then, and we will be continuing to hear public comment and input. And with that, this is a presentation to the Council for consideration and discussion the results from the community outreach and the community survey, and to receive an additional community input concerning a potential bond or revenue measure. I believe we have -- Jeff, are you going to introduce our first speaker?
Yeah, I'll give a quick overview of tonight's meeting and introduce our first speaker. So first of all, thank you all for coming out tonight to listen to the presentation and share any thoughts you might have with your elected leaders and the city staff. That's really the purpose of this whole process. This began with the community, and ultimately, if it goes forward, it will end with the community. And that's a good thing. That's how it should be. As the Council and staff go about their business over the years, you might imagine we have lots of contact with our residents in San Carlos, and we often hear from residents about improvements that they would like to see in the community or services that they'd like to see added, just a wish list of things from residents for San Carlos. And we've kind of kept track of, you know, what the most common items are over the years, and the Council recently decided that they wanted to kind of put that list together and reach out to the community to say, you know, what on the list are you really interested in? How does the community feel about this list of projects? Recognizing that we couldn't hope to fund them all even with a bond measure, the cost of, you know, all 14 project categories that we looked at is in excess of $400 million. So we're not thinking we're going to be doing all these things, and we're not necessarily thinking we're going to be doing any of these things. But we want to find out, you know, these ideas and thoughts came from the community, and we want to find out how the community feels about them. And that's where this process was born, and ultimately could lead to the Council deciding to put a bond measure on the ballot or not in the future, depending on how the community feels and what type of support there is in the community for these ideas. So the process for tonight's meeting is that the City Council will not be making any decisions tonight. They're hearing the results of several different outreach components that the city has gone through the last couple of months. So first, we're going to hear from Stephanie Anderson from Community Focus on the Shape San Carlos forums. These were three separate forum in-person meetings that were held last month here in San Carlos. We had over 100 folks attend. Next, you're going to hear from me on the results of a -- you know, this is a non-scientific online survey through our Shape San Carlos tool. So if you folks haven't heard about Shape San Carlos, it's a great thing to sign up for. We put topics up there from time to time fairly frequently about some of the hot issues in town to get some additional feedback from folks in the community who may be, because of their schedule or their personal responsibilities, don't have the opportunity to attend a City Council meeting. So that just gives us another way of touching the community and hearing from the folks that we all serve. After you hear from me, oh, and you'll also hear, we made a similar presentation to the Rotary Club who had asked us to come speak, so we have the results of that Rotary Club meeting and the 17 folks that participated. Then we're going to hear from Brian Godby of Godby Research on the scientific poll that was conducted of voters in San Carlos. And then we'll have the opportunity for Council questions, some conclusion remarks from the staff, myself, and of course, plenty of opportunity for the public to make comment and provide feedback to their elected officials and city leaders tonight. So with that, I'd like to invite Stephanie up to make her presentation.
Thank you. Thank you, City Council, for this opportunity. I'm Stephanie Anderson. I am the Executive Director of Community Focus. We're a nonprofit, and we do community engagement work. I'm going to provide a brief overview of the Shape San Carlos community forums. As Jeff said, the community forums were part of the city's community engagement efforts. A number of processes have been put into place. Beginning back in September 2014, the city introduced Shape San Carlos, an online community engagement tool, to increase transparency and encourage the community to participate in civic governance. Topics were introduced on Shape San Carlos to gather community input on a number of project and program ideas. In addition to the online engagement tool, the city hosted three Shape San Carlos community forums in January 2015. These forums allowed residents to participate in shaping their city and to have meaningful discussion with their neighbors and with city staff about a variety of potential projects. And the image has disappeared. Oh, there we go. And the purpose of the Shape San Carlos community forums was really to provide qualitative input into the process, to find out more about how people felt about these various project ideas. It was important to reach out to a large number of organizations and wide variety of groups, clubs, associations, et cetera. When promoting the forums, Laura Toichel coordinated the community outreach, reaching out to dozens of different organizations. We sent an electronic invitation, made phone calls, and made announcements in-person at meetings. Brian Carey managed the social media, promoting the forums on Facebook, Twitter, and Next Door. A complete list of the organizations that were contacted is included in the report, which is available online. The three community forums were held on different days and times to accommodate residents' schedules, and the forums had an average attendance of 35 community members at each. At each of the community forums, Jeff Maltby, our city manager, provided an overview of the city's -- a history of the city's revenue flow and current budget limitations, and provided brief descriptions and estimated costs of 14 potential projects that have been suggested and talked about in these earlier community inputs. Community members had the opportunity to discuss these potential projects with each other and to provide written comments in workbooks. Additional ideas were also collected, so if there were other thoughts that folks had that weren't already under discussion, we collected all of those ideas as well, and those are all included in the report, which is available online. Attendees talked with each other about the 14 potential projects, sharing what was important to them and learning from each other. Each attendee was also given a workbook and asked to answer a few questions about each project, highlighting what was compelling about them, what their concerns were, and also ranking their top three priorities. All of the comments are included in the final report, or 55 pages of comments if you care to peruse them. It was very clear that the residents who took the time to attend the community forums care very deeply about the city. We heard a lot of strong opinions, a lot of enthusiasm and even passion, both for and against some of these potential project ideas. And again, the community forums provided valuable qualitative input that helped to inform the next steps of the community engagement process. The forum attendees were asked to identify which projects they felt were urgently needed to improve the quality of life in San Carlos. They also identified projects that they felt were not needed to improve the quality of life in the city. And the attendees ranked their top three priorities. It was interesting to see that in many cases, individuals would rank something as urgently needed for the city even if they personally did not feel that it was a priority, which I thought was very interesting. People were certainly willing to set aside their own personal interests for things that they felt would be better for the city as a whole. There was a lot of energy around the Black Mountain property. As you can see from the chart here, it was the highest ranking in terms of being seen as urgently needed to improve the quality of life, and also it was the highest ranking in terms of just people determining that that was their first priority. There was also a lot of interest and energy around restarting the community shuttle or the scoot shuttle, and there was a lot of energy around creating a dog park. Again, all of the information, and there are many more charts that you can view if you'd like, is all included in the final report. And after the other presentations, I'm happy to take questions. Thank you.
Questions of Stephanie? Mark?
Actually, I didn't have a question so much as a comment. I just wanted folks to be aware, since this is a continuation of the meeting, actually, we all had an opportunity to ask questions on Saturday, so rather than bore you all with asking the same questions again, unless I think of something new, I just thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, Stephanie. Is Brian next?
I'm next.
You're next. Okay.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. The second thing that was going on in terms of our outreach, as I mentioned earlier, was the Shape San Carlos online forum. And again, it was, it's a qualitative forum. It's not a scientific forum, but designed to generate more thoughts and input from the community on these host of programs. We received 316 total responses on the various programs. I should be clicking my own slide, shouldn't I? 316 total responses to the questions that were asked, as well as many, many pages of written comment from the public. And if that comment were provided in testimony form, it would constitute about 26 hours of public comment. So we got quite a bit of feedback from our community on the items we put in front of them, which again included, you know, a very similar list that you just saw, dog parks, recreation facilities, downtown parking, community gardens, shuttle services, Black Mountain, streets and traffic, and other related issues. And here's what we saw from the community in terms of the online Shape San Carlos support. Again, we had Black Mountain with a very high favorable rating to acquire that property for the purposes of a future park. Dog parks and city shuttles also were very favorable. That support drops a little bit when you start to talk about cost and paying for things, as you might imagine. We can all imagine in our lives lots of things that we'd like to have, and probably a fairly robust list of things we feel like we need to have, yet we find a way to live happy lives without them because we've decided that we don't want to pay for them. And that's the same dynamic that you see happening here and that you would expect to see in any such survey, scientific or not. Just as another data point for the Council and the community, things that folks were least interested in paying for included in this Shape San Carlos online forum were city shuttle services. The comment most often received from residents about this was that they really liked it, but they didn't want to see a tax measure associated with it, that they supported a pay-to-ride type concept. So that was a very common response we got from folks. And then, street trees and sidewalks. This is something that comes up from time to time because street trees and sidewalk maintenance are the responsibility of the property owners. And, you know, when it comes time to fix the sidewalk in front of your house or the street tree has caused a problem in front of your house, folks tend to feel that the city ought to pay for those things. Turns out, when you ask them offline, when they don't actually have a problem, that they're very comfortable and don't want the city to pay for those kinds of things. At least they don't want to reach into their pocket to pay any more for them. So if we were to go forward there, we'd have to look at trade-offs with other existing city services. Our Rotary meeting had a very different outcome. We had 17 participants at the Rotary meeting, and their top three priorities improved Holly Street corridor improvements, a major project to realign the entire corridor, widen it, purchase homes on the south side. Street improvements in general, which you'll see in a minute, did fairly well in the community-wide poll that was conducted by Godby Research. And street trees and sidewalk maintenance for Rotary was a high priority that wasn't reflected in some of the other tools that we've seen tonight. So all in all, we were very satisfied with the outcome of the online support. Shape San Carlos is a new tool. It's about, what, six months? Maybe not even quite six months old at this point. So we haven't got a lot of people signed up yet, but it's growing every day and every week and every month. And the more residents that we get in San Carlos signed up for it, the more opportunity we'll have to have a dialogue and hear the comments and feedback from our public, which is a great thing. So I think the tool did its job. We were very impressed to get the comments that we got and are happy to be sharing those with the City Council tonight. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have about this component, or I can introduce Brian Godby to come up and present the results of the polling data.
All right. Let's -- I don't see any --
No lights flashing?
No lights flashing, so...
Brian, take it away.
Thank you, Jeff. Mr. Mayor, members of the Council, happy to be here to go through the quantitative survey one more time. So as you know, the purpose of this, and as we've talked about throughout the presentations before this, the purpose was to look at a quantitative approach, making a representative sample of the population. We wanted to look at opinions about city services at large, facilities and financial management, to look at potential support for the bond measure, to look at a variety of features and a variety of positives, and also some negatives about passing a bond measure. And then, of course, there's a wide variety of demographic information that will be available in our full report in cross-tabulation format. This was a hybrid methodology. We did internet and telephone interviewing. The internet was first, and telephone followed up. And because of the addition of the internet, we were able to add or able to do the number of interviews that we can now. Telephone interviewing has been falling off over the last 18 months, particularly among 18- to 39-year-olds who had used cellphone only, and so we don't have that necessarily available to us, although we do an effort to match them. And more importantly, the 52- to 64-year-olds who have now finally started abandoning their landlines with great haste, actually. And I'm one of those, and I know that while we haven't abandoned our landline, we just never answer it. And I'm a pollster, and if I don't talk to other pollsters, you know that nobody does. So the universe that we looked at was likely November voters, then within that, and these are concentric circles, likely June 2016 voters, and then within that, the smallest group, likely November 15 voters. We were in the field in late January through early February. The average telephone survey was 20 minutes long. In terms of the sample size, we got 692 completed interviews. 580 of those come from the internet, 112 from the phone, and then you can see that they range from 692 total for the November universe of 2016 down to 420 for the November 15 universe. The error rate ranges from 3.6 at the low end to 4.6 at the high end, so a really good error rate. The first section of the survey was the climate, what we call the climate section, and what that really has nothing to do with weather, but it's all about people's perceptions of the city. The first question was, do you have a favorable or unfavorable impression of the job the city is doing to provide services? We ask it at the high level first, then we drill down. Is that very or somewhat favorable? Same thing on the negative side. And you can see the individual segmented responses here. But because of the way we asked the question, we can aggregate it back together and see that there are 86% in round numbers favorable versus 9.2% unfavorable. There's only 5% not sure, and where we've asked this question in other cities, the not sure is typically higher. So that was interesting. People in this universe, at least, are fairly definitive about their opinion. The other way we look at this is we look at the ratio of favorable to unfavorable. And as you can see from the box in the lower left-hand corner, we have a favorable ratio of 9.3 to 1. That's a great place to be.
Hey, Brian, I think you need to advance the slides.
Oh, I'm sorry. There we go. Now you can look at the box in the lower left-hand corner. Sorry about that. 9.3 to 1 is a great place to be. It means people have a very positive perception of your services. And just to give you some reference, where we asked this same question in a whole variety of other communities, the lowest that we've seen this rating and still a successful revenue measure is a 2.0 to 1. So you're well ahead of that, and it's better to be in that situation than the reverse. The next question is similar methodology, but here we're asking their opinion on facilities, again, favorable versus unfavorable. As you can see here, when you aggregate it, it's 84% favorable versus 10% in round numbers unfavorable. There's only 6.1% unsure. That's an 8.7 to 1 ratio, same comparison point as before. So that's really a great place to be as well. The next question is, do people have a favorable and favorable impression of your management of taxpayer dollars? This one almost always has a higher don't know or not sure category, and there is certainly that here. But as this goes, in other communities, 12.5% is still relatively low. So people in this universe have a pretty good handle on what you're doing in this area. And when we -- because that goes up, that unsure is still higher, that means we have less to work with on the other side of the equation, where we have 68% favorable versus 20% unfavorable, because we're dealing with taxpayer dollars here. This is almost always more negative than the previous surveys. But our ratio is still very positive at 3.6 to 1. We've been successful with a 2/3 measure as low as .9 to 1. So you're in a very good position there. The next set of questions endeled all of these things that we've been talking about in the other presentations, and we presented those in a random order to the respondents and said, okay, now, does knowing that fixing streets and repairing potholes or purchasing undeveloped Black Mountain space for open space make you more or less likely to support the idea of a bond measure? And what you see here are the responses to that question. We drill down on each side and say, is that much more likely or somewhat more likely? Same thing on the negative side. The green part of the bar and the blue part of the bar, added together, are the total more likely. And what we do is we look at these based on the error rates that we saw at the beginning, and we organize them into tiers, and that's what you see here. In tier one, we have fixing streets and potholes with 79%, much more and somewhat more likely. That's clearly tier one. Tier two, things that from a statistical perspective are essentially tied, but there is a numeric difference, as you can see. At the top of that list is purchasing the Black Mountain property. That's 63% in round numbers, much more or somewhat more likely, than creating more free parking downtown, putting utility wires underground, creating local shuttle program, making improvements to the Holly Street corridor at 54%, at least somewhat more likely. So that's the second tier of issues. Again, from top to bottom, they're essentially tied from a statistical perspective, but there is a numeric difference, as you can see here. And then we have finally the last tier, and that starts with updating, improving community centers at 50% and goes down to adding a dog park at 32% in round numbers. The dog park is a lower priority among the entire population than we saw in those other studies. There are clearly constituents for it. I have to disclaim, I have three German Shepherds, so I've been to a dog park or two. That's right, three German Shepherds. Imagine that. I snatch her every day. But the dog park was clearly at the lower end of the third tier. The next set of questions is much the same methodology, but in this case, this is a list of supporting statements. Why would we do this? What are the benefits to San Carlos residents of moving forward with one or some of the items that we just talked about? The question is a little bit different. Since we identified it as from supporters, we only have a much more likely and a somewhat more likely to support the measure. There's no negative because it just doesn't make sense to people in a survey. The tiers are organized much the same way. So in our top tier, we have by law, all funds from this measure must stay local in San Carlos. That equates to 72%, at least somewhat more likely. Down to the bottom of that tier, undergrounding utility wires makes our neighborhood safer. That's 61%, at least somewhat more likely. So with that 5% error rate, plus or minus, that's within that 10-point spread that defines a tier. a tier. In our second tier, we have purchasing Black Mountain will prevent it from being developed at 60%, ranging down to now is the right time to invest in San Carlos, given interest rates, et cetera. These are summaries of the full question, and that was 52%, at least somewhat more likely. And then the final tier is business and homeowners will all pay their fair share. Dog park would give owners a place to exercise their dogs, yay. And the swimming pool would allow room for senior and youth programs. On the other side of the equation, we have the opposition statements, because we don't live in a vacuum, it's important to look at both sides of the coin. The methodology here is the same as the positive statements, and with the note that we don't put a minus sign in front of them to make them seem bad. So, the higher they are, that's the more likely they are to oppose a bond measure for these kinds of things. The tiers are defined the same way, and in the top tier, we have seniors on fixed income who can't afford it. That's 49%. That's a pretty big number. Voters passed hundreds of millions of dollars in bonds, partial taxes, and a county sales tax at 48%. If taxes weren't going to high salaries and pensions, et cetera, we wouldn't need this measure, so it's sort of an anti-government argument. And then, well, in the second tier, but still above the 1/3 level, and 1/3 is important because for bond measure, you only take 1/3 to defeat it. We also have increasing property tax will drive businesses out of town. That's 36%. And spending millions to buy Black Mountain just benefits people near the property at 34%. So, that's right at the 1/3 level, slightly above. And then finally, our community's not growing, so why do we need this? That's actually less important as an argument against it. But five of the six here are more than 33.4%, which is the minimum required to defeat a measure. In conclusion, TBWB and Godby Research think that a citizen's priority does support a bond measure with the following qualifications. We have to look at those priorities and let them be our guide. Fixing streets and repairing potholes were clearly at the top of the list. Purchasing the undeveloped Black Mountain property was second. The support for the bond measure actually ranged from a high of 68% down to 56%, and it depended on, depending on the projects that we had included, the cost of the bond measure, and the election timing, because there is some differences based on the type of voter that's turning out. Then, a bond measure must be affordable, and we found that a tax rate of $29 per $100,000 of assessed valuation was really where we should be focusing. And I think there's also an effort, need to be made, to explain what Black Mountain property is. Interestingly enough, we got an email during the process, the internet survey process, where somebody who lived west of Alameda said, "Where's the Black Mountain property?" So, not everybody knows where it is, if even people who you might consider are in the neighborhood don't know. So, I think that if, as you move through this process, helping people understand where it is and what it is would make a big difference. And that's really the final point, that we need to make that effort to explain, explain these various projects as part of this process. So, I'm certainly happy to answer any questions you might have, or...
Yes, I think we got a couple. Cameron?
Thanks, Brian. So, I'll make just a brief comment, which is, I made it the previous forum, which is, I really want to compliment you guys on the process, Brian and Stephanie and Jeff. You know, I think it's been a very transparent, very open process. You're using different methodologies to try and get at kind of the underlying question of, you know, do residents in San Carlos want to spend additional money to invest in their community, and if so, what do they want to, you know, what would they want to spend it on? And a lot of times in politics, it's, you know, one person's agenda or one interest group's agenda here. We're really trying to get at kind of the broad swath, the public will, is their interest, and I think this is great information, and I think it's done in a really, frankly, in an apolitical way. It's just simply posing the question to people, and I'm really happy to see all the data that we're getting back. I wanted to ask a question, maybe to all three of you. You know, I try to look at each of these three presentations. So, we had the community forums, online forums, and then now the survey, and try and sort of stitch them together and see what the conclusions are. So, my best take on it, and you can tell me if I'm right or wrong, is that the forums, whether it's online or in person, is really a measure of public passion around specific topics. And so, you see, you know, you see the similar situation in the online forums and in the public forums, where Black Mountain jumps out, and then the shuttle jumps out, and the dog park jumps out, and it's, is there a sort of a pocket of constituency that's really passionate, that's willing to get up on a Saturday morning and go to a forum or go online and do this? It would probably be the basis of an advocacy campaign if we were to get to that point. And then, the survey is a question about broad public support, and would people actually vote for it? And so, what I see there is Black Mountain also ranks very highly. So, you have, in Black Mountain, what I'm seeing is broad public support across the community, and then you also have specifically a passionate core that would be out there advocating for it. I think for the dog park and for the shuttle, you have a passionate constituency, but maybe not broad public support, because dog park was all the way at the bottom of your survey. And then on the streets, you have the reverse, which is you have broad public support, but it doesn't seem to be that there's a passionate group behind it, or at least that didn't show up in the forums. Am I thinking about this in the right way? Do you think that's a good analysis?
I'll also let my colleagues speak, too, but I think that's essentially correct. And, you know, I think that dog parks is a good example. There's a very vocal constituency.
Right.
But is it really broad is the other, and that's what the survey is saying, is it's not so broad.
Right.
But that doesn't mean that there aren't constituencies for all of these things that are vocal and would like to see them, because they would improve their view of San Carlos.
Right.
Stephanie, do you want to?
I would, I would just add, too, that in the community forums, there was much less focus on the cost or asking, "Would you be willing to pay for this?" That was, there was less emphasis on that. It was really more focused on why would, you know, when, once the city's heard all these different project ideas are being circulated, "Well, we really wanted to hear, what is it about this that is interesting to you?" Or, "Why do you think this is a good idea or not a good idea?" So, there was much less emphasis on the cost. Whereas in the survey, you start really drilling down on that. What are you willing to pay for? How much are you willing to pay for it? So, that's, that's part of that difference as well.
And then, Brian, one last thing. So, it seems also that kind of the key here is that it requires 2/3s.
Yes.
So, if this was a simple majority vote, there might be a whole host of projects that would be above the line, that, you know, would get enough, a majority support in town. But when you, when you have to get 2/3s, it seems, based on your analysis, that there's very few that would achieve that level of support. Is that right?
Yeah. In fact, there's six different items that, and I can go back to that slide, that exceed this 50% majority. There's one at 50%. So, yeah, it would change dramatically if this were a simple majority. And even if it were a supermajority like school bonds are, where it's a 55%, then you have 1, 2, 3, 4, 4 solidly above the 55% level and 1 right at it. So, that would change the dynamics dramatically.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, everybody, for the presentations. They were as entertaining the second time around as they were the first, and informative, too, more importantly. And I'm sure they were very useful for the folks who weren't able to make it on Saturday and are here tonight. I just had a question that I hadn't thought of on Saturday, which actually is a Greg Rubin's question, I think. Unlike in a, based on my prior experience being on the school board, unlike in a parcel tax where you can choose to exempt seniors over the age of 65 from, from being subject to the tax, on a bond measure, you can't do that. The question I have is, given that seniors are in a somewhat different situation because of being on limited incomes and whatnot, or often on limited incomes, do, would we have the statutory authority, if we chose to do this, to basically use general fund money, similar to the program we talked about establishing for trash collection fees, to say if somebody is on that PG&E limited income list? I forget what the name of the program is. Pardon me? Care program. Thank you. That, that we would use general fund monies to pay their portion of a bond measure assessment?
Well, I, right now, I, I'm not sure I can answer that question completely, but I think in concept, if we could identify a public purpose for that, that might be possible to avoid the gift of public funds issue.
Okay. Fair enough.
But I think it's something in this process we can look at and answer that question for you.
Actually, I would appreciate it if you did that, but even your comment of reminding me about the gift of public funds issue is an important thing I can think about further. Thank you.
All right. Bob?
I just wanted to ask the same question that I asked the other day for the folks that weren't here. At $29, and I think, Jeff, you answered it, $29 per $100,000, from a back-of-the-envelope amount, what was the amount that you estimated possibly we could get?
I'll give you the same complicated answer I gave on Saturday, which is, back-of-the-envelope, probably $30 to $40 million.
That's, yeah.
You know, front-of-the-envelope, it requires a lot of analysis, and we have a financial consultant working with us, because, you know, a bond measure is, reaches very far out into the future, right? You know, it's out there 30 years. So, part of the assumption of any bond measure has to do with, you know, what do they, you know, what do we think is going to happen to the population in San Carlos, the demographics of San Carlos, our property values in San Carlos? How will that all work to figure out what, while you, you know what you're ultimately going to collect, because you would decide, you know, okay, it's going to be, just for the sake of argument, $20 per, you know, $100,000 of assessed valuation. So, people can understand, they know what their house's taxes are assessed based on, and they can figure that out individually, because everybody's home's going to be assessed differently, so everybody's going to pay a slightly different amount. And so, they know what they would be paying. We don't necessarily know what we would be collecting, because, you know, those assessed valuations are going to change, you know, when a house sells or, you know, whatever happens that causes the assessed valuation of a property to go either up or down in the future. And to give you a real-world example, you know, we have a bond, a bond on the books for the building of the San Carlos library that was passed in the 1990s, the mid to late 90s, and that bond is set to be retired around the year 2025. I think it was a, something between $8 and $11 million bond. And we're in the process of refinancing that bond right now, because the interest rates are so low, we're going to save the taxpayers a few bucks over the remainder of the life of the bond, put some money, leave, leave some money in the, in the taxpayers' pockets. While we're in the process of refinancing, we've also collected more revenue on the library bond than they anticipated the bond would collect back in the 90s. So, in other words, property values and the rate at which property would turn over in San Carlos has beaten the expectations that they had back then, so we've actually collected an additional $1.7 million, thereabouts, in bond proceeds. So, while we take advantage of the favorable interest rates on the library, we're also going to take that money that we've collected and pay down the bonds to further save the taxpayers' money. So, I think we're going to be knocking about $25 a year off their tax bill when, when the refi's done. So, until we know exactly what the tax rate is, if there's going to be one, and until we get the analysis done by our financial consultants, we don't know exactly what the bond would create.
All right. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Jeff, proving that you should always just stick to the back of the envelope, because when you go to the front of the envelope, you create the opportunity for more questions. Something you said prompted this, this question, next question for me. And I'll caveat it by saying, I understand the mechanics of picking bond principal amounts and rates is relatively complicated, but in a simplified sense, can you take the logic that you described and basically invert it? Something along the lines of saying, "Okay, today, we believe with safety and comfort factors that we could borrow X million dollars at a $29, let's say, or $25 per $100,000 assessment rate." But structure the bond measure in such a way that if, as property values rise, the assessment rate automatically goes down, so that we're still, we're just collecting enough money to pay off whatever the, whatever the principal and interest is in the bonds?
I understand the question. I don't know if you can structure the, the actual mechanics of it that way or not, but that's certainly something that we can, the staff can investigate as the process moves forward.
And thank you. I appreciate that. And just so you understand, what occurred to me that there might be some value in that is anticipating that we would collect more money, and that periodically, as you mentioned with the library bond, we can refinance and then lower people's taxes, is one thing, but folks may feel more comfortable knowing that it would happen sort of automatically, as opposed to having to be a decision process along the way.
And the worst-case scenario is, I kind of think it would happen automatically at the end of the life of the bond.
Right.
Where, you know, essentially, your last, you know, say, two or three years worth of bond payments you'd already have in the bank, and you would simply pay them off.
Right.
So...
Thank you.
All right. Brian, I just had a question. I didn't think about this on Saturday, and it's nice to have the presentation twice, because you think about things you didn't think about. But I noticed that, you know, obviously, fixing the streets pulled very highly, and the Black Mountain pulled fairly high, but it didn't beat that threshold. And I'm just wondering, if we combine, like, the top two things and say to people, "Look, we're going to fix the streets and buy a piece of property," what is that, what do you think that does to the numbers? I mean, is that likely to, you know, when you, you sort of cobble together the most popular things in a bond measure, does that, do you think it pushes it over a reasonable threshold?
I think in this case, those two can push it over the 2/3 threshold. I think when you put too many things on the, too many ornaments on the tree, let's say, then it becomes top-heavy, and that one, one thing that is over the 2/3s, in this case, the streets, can't support the others. But I think if you stay at the top two with the streets and Black Mountain, I think you can do that. The caveat, though, is I think people need to know more about Black Mountain. And I think that, I mean, this, this, we had a, we had a process of three different kinds of input, and we had a long list. If we were just doing streets and open space acquisition, we would talk more about streets and open space acquisition. Again, that's the council's decision, but the survey would be much more focused. And you can think about the campaign that was run for the Mid Peninsula Open Space District, which did focus exclusively on open space. There's lots of other things to talk about, trails and hiking and some of the things we saw in the presentation at the beginning of the meeting. Those are features that weren't tested, which I think if they were, and they were communicated in your outreach efforts, then you could see even the Black Mountain number going up by itself.
So, what you're saying is if we said, "Here's what we're going to do if we buy Black Mountain," not just saying we're going to buy it.
Right.
Just to have extra land.
Right. Right. And I think the things that people, while we haven't done a park master plan survey for you, I believe there is one, but we have seen in our, all of our park master planning surveys, hiking trails, walking paths are the top recreation facility people want. And it's just, it's almost axiomatic in Northern California. And if you think about particularly the age of voters, which isn't 20-something, it's 50-something and 60-something, particularly in an off-year election, you know, those are not people that are engaged in, in active sports. They're looking for passive recreation, which is walking the dog, whether that's in a dog park or not, probably not, but, or just, you know, going for a walk at night.
I've had, I've been running into various people around town who got the phone call. And I guess the, the most common thing I heard was, other than that was, they thought it was long, I guess it was something like 20 minutes.
20 minutes, yeah.
They, they said, "Well, it seemed like they were trying to lead us to a particular conclusion, and there wasn't enough opportunity to, to choose something that wasn't on the list." And I realize that Shape San Carlos did that, and the community forums did that, but was there any opportunity? I didn't get the phone call, by the way. Was there any opportunity for people to say, "By the way, I think you should do X"? Not in this survey now. And I don't think telephone surveys or even internet surveys are a little bit different, but telephone surveys isn't really not the place to do that, because not only is it long, and it's 20 minutes, but there's a million things going on in the background, you know, dinner's burning, and the kids are screaming, and whatever it might be. So, people tend not to think about the open-ended questions very thoroughly. What we are finding as we move more to the internet is, you know, we have people's attention...
What we are finding as we move more to the internet is, you know, we have people's attention because they're sitting down at their computer and they're responding to an email, so we do get open-ended questions in greater detail. We didn't have any in this particular survey, but I think also that's what the community workshops are for, is to have people talk in great detail about, yeah, I like all those that Jeff talked about, but what about this? That's really a better place for it. Or a focus group as a research technique with a different, a smaller group of people is a useful way of doing that, too.
So are you finding that internet surveys are becoming more reliable or better predictors of possible outcomes than, say, telephone surveys?
That's my personal belief. It's probably early in the process to say that definitively. I had a long conversation with a client today where my conclusion was, based on looking at a lot of detailed analyses, that that's actually the case, that the internet is more predictive. And the reason for that, when I started doing this 30 years ago, we got one out of 10 people when we called them on the phone, responded. But a great response, right? We finished a survey in Santa Z last year that we got one out of 125. That's the difference in 30 years. And now, some other communities were one out of 75, but there's still a dramatic difference. I, well, I think we are representative of the population, we are missing people who don't want to talk on the phone. And while we have the demographics, both on partisanship and on age and gender and ethnicity that match, you know, I still think, what's, is there a systematic bias of those vast majority now that are not answering their phone?
It's called caller ID.
Well, that's certainly why, yeah, no, you're absolutely right. And as I said, I'm guilty of that as an ex person. So I think that in the last five years, that while we've been reliable with our phone-only surveys, I think we could have been more reliable, and the efficacy of the internet component is going up. And I think that within the next couple of years, well, by the time we get to the presidential election next year, I think we'll be doing even larger sample sizes, because what happens in the presidential election is the universe gets bigger and includes who? Younger people.
Right.
So it's going to be even more important as we look at the election, particularly the November election cycle next year.
Okay, thank you. Mark, you have another question?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Actually, a comment just based on the discussion you were just having, part of the discussion you were just having with Brian. The, every single bond measure that I worked on or participated in when I was on the school board, there were always components in the facilities that were going to be funded, facility work that was going to be funded at them, basically at all the schools. Even though, as you might imagine, because schools were built at different times, they'd all wear out at the same time. And that was a very deliberate approach to make sure that the community as a whole had some stake in the game. Because you basically, part of the name of the game is you're looking for a way to touch as many people as possible, trying to look for a way to show the value proposition to as many people as possible. And you do that in part through scope, in terms of what's funded and what you talk about, what you're going to do with whatever you're acquiring or building. And part of it you also do through the education and campaign process. Now, that, those latter parts are not things that staff can do, but there are things that we can do as elected officials, and there are certainly things that the campaign, the campaign can do, you know, the campaign itself can do. So it's a very good question, and it's at the heart of structuring something that, when you move beyond the polling data, you actually are trying to figure out something that's going to work. And there's some art in that.
Jeff, you wanted to add something for us?
Yeah, if the council's done with their questions, I have just a couple more slides as you might recall from last time.
No one has let up that they want to talk, so.
Give Crystal a second to get it up. There it is. So clearly, we had two, we had two potential projects that seemed to have risen to the top of the list, and so we thought we'd just provide a little bit more information for folks that are watching at home or here in the audience about those things, because certainly with the case of Black Mountain property, there were a lot of folks who simply weren't familiar with, you know, what is or where is the Black Mountain property. So Black Mountain Property is located off the Alameda, and I'll show you a picture of it in just a second. There's three homes on the property. Right now, it's about an 11-acre site. It's not flat, it's rather hilly. It's an attractive sort of cross-section of the hills of San Carlos. And if it were to be purchased, like I said, it's on the market, the family that's owned it for years and years is looking to sell it. If it were purchased by a developer under the existing zoning and land use regulations of the city, you could see as many as 68 single-family homes built on the property in the future. So here's a picture of the property. It's outlined in yellow. That's the Alameda in the, down there at the bottom right-hand corner of the image. In the, in the sort of top left-hand quadrant, almost, almost fits perfectly in there, it actually sort of spreads into the middle, is a second property called the Rioli Property. That's about, I think, eight or nine acres in size. It's also on the market and could be potentially acquired as part of the, with bond proceeds if the council wanted to go in that direction, and the community ultimately voted in favor of it, creating, you know, a 15, 16-acre or greater park in San Carlos there. And it does create the opportunity for a little bit of a flatter area in sort of that upper-middle portion of the property. And you can see currently, there's three homes, one's kind of hiding down there below the one with the red roof in the middle, and then you can see the upper home with the swimming pool there. And then there's some old greenhouses on the Rioli Property that are quite smashed and broken up, so that would certainly require some cleanup if and when the city ever acquired that property. In terms of streets, just to give you a real quick overview, the city's got about 86 centerline miles of street in town with a pavement condition index of 60 out of 100, which is, you know, probably a little bit above average for the peninsula. Staff doesn't get a whole lot of complaints, which is a qualitative measure about the conditions of our streets. Certainly, we have potholes like every other community, but we do a pretty good job in filling those potholes and maintaining our streets. We put in, virtually every dollar we get in gas tax goes into the street maintenance fund every year, but, you know, as is the case right now at the pump, the prices of gas are really down and have been for a while, so they're not generating as much tax. And as more and more folks are switching to hybrids and electric vehicles and finding alternative fuels and being environmentally conscious, there isn't quite as much gas being sold as you might have projected in the future. So at some point, cities and the states starting to wrestle with this right now may need to find other dedicated funding sources to take care of streets if gas taxes aren't going to cover it. We filled about 2,000 potholes in the last fiscal year and spent about $1.4 million in terms of street maintenance improvements. So in terms of my conclusion and next steps, just remind everybody in the audience and the diocese that we're not making any decisions tonight, but we are rapidly approaching a point where we would look for the council to begin making decisions. And so we will be putting an item on your March 9 agenda. This item wouldn't be to vote for a bond measure, but it would be really the first opportunity to end this process and say you're not interested in going forward with a bond measure. If the council does want to continue on, our hope is that you would select your top priority project, or maybe the top two, and direct staff to go out and do more in-depth outreach specific to that one or two projects with the community, so we could get more in-depth feedback specific to those projects. And then we'd circle back around in the June timeframe with Godbe Research and do another community-wide poll to see how that project or two projects is being received by the community. And ultimately, in mid-to-late summer, the council would have to vote on whether or not to put something on the ballot if this was going to be done in November 2015. And there are, as Brian indicated in his presentation, some other ballot options after November 2015. But again, if we're going to go forward with Black Mountain, it's a privately-owned piece of property, they could sell it at any time to anybody. We are talking to the family, and they are glad we are, and I think they'd love to see it go to the city and be preserved as a special place in our community. But ultimately, whether or not the council chooses to go forward with a bond measure or not, or ultimately whether or not, you know, a bond measure got 60% of the ballot or, you know, 80% of the ballot, it's been a very valuable process. We've had a lot of wonderful comments, feedback from our community, and a lot of folks are very, very proud to live in, work in, own businesses in this community. There's a lot of proud tradition here. There's a lot of volunteerism, and it certainly made the staff feel good to be involved in the process of outreach to the community, and the community seemed equally thrilled to be, to be part of it and to have generated in just, you know, a six-to-eight-week period of time about 1,000 contacts within our town on this, 1,000 touchpoints, I think is quite remarkable. And if you go forward, I'm sure that we'll get, you know, the community excited and engaged to provide us even more feedback about any project you might be interested in pursuing.
Okay, thank you. Well, I do have one speaker card. Sam Hartsburg? How you doing, Sam?
Good evening, City Council members and staff. Recently, our neighborhood, the Greater East San Carlos, had its own meeting to discuss the various developments happening around the neighborhood, the issues of concern, and recommended solutions. And so when you're considering a bond measure, you want to make sure that you are considering all of the community's wants and needs. So I had sent by email last night a summary of some of those wants and needs that you may want to consider in the Shape San Carlos discussion. And maybe just to do a quick review over them. The Sequoia High School property at L'Oreala Park was a, that site was a topic of discussion when the city's park master plan was done, but the city didn't want to include acquisition of that land in that discussion in the master plan because it was owned by private property. Now that the city is working with the school district on the possibility of another location, the opportunity presents itself for maybe the city acquiring that land, which is a subject of a lot of discussion during the transit village. Park fees were collected, and as you have a hotel, landmark hotel, and additional hotels along industrial, it could be a possibility to acquire that property, and so that should be considered. Also, our neighborhood has been surrounded by industrial uses for 60 years, and as we look at transitions, we'd really like to see a greening of the community. L'Oreala Park community building is rather old, and if you were to build a new building there that could serve more purposes, there was a lot of talk several years ago about moving some city park services over to the east side, so that's worth considering. There's a deficit of parklands on the east side, and there was a woodlot near Taylor and Old County Road that former mayor Randy Royce had identified as a potential park site. If acquired, it would be appropriate to name that site after him. In terms of a dog park, that also popped up on our survey, and a site was identified on Samtrans Lands on El Camino across the street from Walgreens. That's Samtrans Lands, rather narrow strip, but I think of it kind of like the skateboard park that was on El Camino and, I think, 41st Street. Nice to see, you know, residents enjoying themselves as you drive by. We have some flooding issues, Bayport Court and industrial behind Fairfield, which need to be addressed, so resolving kind of public health safety issues to the community. And then there's some pedestrian safety issues at Holly East that still need to be resolved, as well as at El Camino at East San Carlos, at San Carlos Avenue, which are cited in the letter. And then completing East Side Connect, North and South, there was only enough funding to complete the significant portion of the residential part of the, of the project, but not connecting the pedestrian, not connecting the neighborhood to the schools, kind of like the safe routes to schools on Old County Road, and improving the walkability for our youth. So that doesn't mean that this list is specific to Shape San Carlos, but if this is a funding measure and you're trying to build community support from all of the community, I wanted to share this list. There may be other funding measures or mechanisms to address some of these concerns, so this may not be the only, only way to address it, but I want to present that to you. If you have any questions, be glad to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, Sam. All right, would anyone else wish to address us? Well, I'm not seeing anybody rushing up, so. But let me just go back. Mark, did you want to?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, just had a quick question for either Jeff or Greg, and just thinking in the context of the Black Mountain at Al properties, and given the fact that they are private properties and they are on the market right now, what happens if there, if we decide to go through with the process and there's a bond measure, and, you know, it ends up being approved by voters, and then the property's sold, but not to us? Does, does, can the bond measure be written so that it basically becomes null and void, or what?
Yeah, I'm sure we could, we could find a way to accomplish that, or you just simply wouldn't go through with the issuance of the bond. So I imagine there's probably a number of mechanisms to accomplish that. I think our goal, you know, we're already meeting with the property owners, so our goal, if this does go forward, is to sort of negotiate the terms ahead of time and reach an understanding that, you know, they would be waiting for us to do this bond, and that we, we would be agreeing to put it on the ballot in the quickest time that would be possible to answer the question one way or another for the property owners. There are advantages to selling to the city as opposed to a private developer in terms of tax advantages for the owners. On the other hand, developers may have deeper pockets and be willing to pay more. Beyond that, the only other recourse would be that the city does have eminent domain authority, so you could always exercise that authority after the fact. Not that I'm suggesting you do that, but it's possible.
All right, we did have a late speaker card come in. And another one. So the next speaker would be Priya Joseph.
Okay, I am going to reiterate what I said the last time. I want more transparency. I would like to know what you guys are going to use, the potential monies, proceeds that you would get out of the bond measure, and any surplus that comes out of it. That's one question. And the second one is, there was a mention of a demographic report in the Godbe Research, so can I get a copy of that? The third question is, the Shape San Carlos had a 55-page comments list, so if it's possible to get that. So those were the three things.
Okay, thank you. All right, Bob Black?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bob Black, 585 Dartmouth Avenue. I think we should put as a high priority the maintenance of our infrastructure, and that that should be paid for out of either current revenue, or maybe we need to do some revenue enhancement. But in order to retain our quality of life, we need to keep our infrastructure, not just streets, but all infrastructure. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Bob. All right, anybody else change their mind and want to come up and speak? All right, well, I think that concludes our comments, and if there's nothing else, I think we're probably adjourned. Thank you all for coming.